Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this ninth day of January 2020. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Cindy, would you please call in?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lozad. Councilwoman Martel?
Here.
Councilman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilwoman Skivoni?
Present.
Alright, so, uh, welcome to our first work session of the year. It's gonna be a busy year. You've heard my inaugural address. I talked about lots of different things that are ahead for the year. So, uh, we're gonna have to roll up our sleeves and get to work. Good things. Um, so today, we are gonna talk about sustainability and, uh, gas leaf blowers and helium balloons. But before we do that, we want to allow the clerk to go ahead and publish the agenda. So let's go through the agenda for the next meeting, which is January fourteenth next week. It'll occur, um, at 1:00 PM. It's an afternoon meeting. It'll be, uh, right here, I believe, in the same room. Right here in this room, 1:00 PM, January fourteenth. We have a couple of public hearings. Uh, first one is on acquiring lands of Nathaniel Tracus. Uh, as trustee of the Louis Tracus Irrevocable Trust and Tracus Realty LLC Hampton Days amends the CPF plan. A second one considers amending the town of Southampton Community Preservation Plan, considering the acquisition of lands of Three D Associates, Inc. and Cap Tree Group LLC in Remsenburg, and amends the CPF Management Plan. That's not large. I don't want, I wanna say a hundred sixty acres?
Sixty-four, I think.
Hundred, yeah, a hundred sixty-plus acre property over there in, uh, Spionk. Used to be, we used to call it Woodfield Gables or something, right?
Yeah.
Um, number three, third public hearing is to consider transfer lands of Suffolk County in Riverside pursuant to general municipal law section seventy-two H, and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan. Seventy-two H is a provision of state law that allows the county to transfer tax-defall properties to the town for various purposes. Usually affordable housing, though. This piece, I believe, we're looking for water quality. Uh, it's along the Riverwoods property, the mobile home facility there in, uh, the Riverside area. And the fourth public hearing is consider landmark designation of the Topping Reiner House, 121 Road in West Hampton. So that's for landmark designation. Alright, any questions about the public hearings? Alright, so let's, uh, hearing, no, let's move on to resolutions. Thirty-three, three-three-one-three accepts the award and authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents for the Empire State Economic Development Grant Award for the Chitticock Commercial Fishing Dock Rehabilitation. Three-three-oh, three-three-three-oh-seven accepts award and authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents for New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act of two thousand seventeen grant award.
Would like to be added as co-sponsor, if that's alright.
Madam Clerk, would you please add John as a co-sponsor on three-three-three-oh-seven?
Certainly.
And, um, Ms. Lozad asked me if I read her?
Okay.
Resolutions. ID three-three-three-one-five, authorization of the Department of Senior Services to make application supervisor to sign any and all documents pertaining to the twenty-twenty Suffolk County Title for Title, Title Three E Adult Care Center.
Three-three-three-one-two, authorizes an agreement with the Town of Southampton Housing Authority to administer the section eight housing choice voucher program.
Again, would like to be added as co-sponsor.
Cindy, you got that?
Yeah.
Is that alright? Tommy John?
Three-three-three-two-four, authorize purchase of heavy-duty parts, uh, Sterling, Mack, and Ford from Suffolk County Contract.
Town Board Resolution ID three-three-three-one-six, authorize supervisor to sign a twenty-twenty contract with Suffolk County Officer, Office for the Aging to Receive Senior Citizen Nutrition Program Funding. Town Board Resolution ID three-three-three-three-one-nine, authorize the purchase of food products and related supplies from Omnia Partners with Premier Incorporated with distribution through U.S. Foods.
Three-three-three-two-nine, authorizes the purchase of law enforcement safety equipment and supplies from the Albany County with Gauls LLC. Three-three-three-two-six, authorizes the purchase of maintenance, repair, and operations MRO supplies, parts, equipment, material, and related services from the Omnia Partners contract with W.W. Grainger.
Town Board Resolution ID three-three-three-two-five, authorize the purchase of milk and dairy products from New York State OGS and Crema Land Dairies LLC.
So, you know, the reason why we do this is just to make sure everybody knows what's on the agenda, make sure the public knows what's on the agenda, and it allows for the town board, if they have any questions about a bill, to, uh, to get any clarifications that they might need, and if we, if we notice an error, we can, we can sort of change it before we make it public. It's not just to show that we can read these things. So, please speak up if you have any questions. Three-three-three-two-zero, authorizes the purchase of tires from the Suffolk County Contract with Barnwell House of Tires. Three-three-three-one-eight, authorizes the supervisor to sign twenty-twenty village agreement with, for home improvement inspection services.
Town Board Resolution three-three-three-oh-two, authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with North Fork Express. Town Board Resolution three-three-one-one, co-sponsored with Councilwoman Skivoni, is to authorize the supervisor to execute a twenty-twenty contract extension for appraisals with Lawrence Indimini Consulting Corporation, R.J. Matsu, Matsu, Matuza, and Associates, Carol Sweeney, M.I.A., M.A.I., and Brunswick Appraisal Corporation.
Not missing an action, but M.A.I.
M.A., M.A.I., yeah.
Yeah, right, right.
It came too easily.
Alright, three-three-three-one-seven, authorizes the supervisor to execute twenty-twenty cooperative agreement with neighboring villages in a town to provide fire inspection services.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to that.
Cindy, you got that?
Thank you.
Three-three-three-oh-one, authorizes supervisor to execute twenty-twenty contract with Aquarius Capital Company to provide actuarial services to the town. Tommy John?
Three-three-three-zero-eight, authorize supervisor to execute a contract extension with L.K. McLean Associates PC for professional services to be provided for highway department for various townwide projects. Three-three-three-one-zero, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with D&amp;D Engineers and Architects PC for the preparation of a ten-year capital plan for the Hampton Days Water District.
Yeah, let me just explain, I believe, what this is, 'cause we've, we've already done this. No, it's just an extension of the same contract. There's no additional money. At some point, though, we do, uh, there should be a resolution for fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, that's what it's costing to have them do this community meeting that we're gonna be doing in early February, discussing the plan. So, I don't know that, if that's in that number or not?
Not to exceed thirty-three thousand?
Where do you see, not in the amount. It says forty-eight-five.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, I don't know if that's already included in the forty-eight-five. It may be. We'll, we'll get clarification.
Alright.
Alright, Tommy John, you're next?
Yeah. Three-three-three-zero-nine, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extension with Roadwork Construction Corporation for maintenance, installation, and repair of water mains hydrants within the Hampton Days Water District.
Three-three-three-oh-three, authorizes the supervisor to execute a contract with Cornell Cooperative Extension of Suffolk County to partner with the town for passive permeable reactive barriers.
Would like to be added as co-sponsor, please?
Can we add John as a co-sponsor?
Got it.
Is this, I think we're gonna be one at Iron Point, isn't it?
Yeah, there was some issues with the, uh, there's actually, they're finding that there's higher levels of water there than expected.
Higher levels of?
There's more water intrusion in the area where they were originally going to put it, so it's up in the air right now.
Or, I think there was less nitrogen than they thought, too.
Yes, well, there's more flushing than expected in it.
Oh, okay, so it's more diluted?
Mm-hmm.
So they felt that that was not a good spot to test it?
That's what I understand.
So what is this doing? I guess they're gonna continue to try to find a spot?
Yeah, this, this allows the contract to continue.
For another year? Okay.
Town Board Resolution ID three-three-three-zero-six, co-sponsored with Councilwoman Skivoni, to authorize the supervisor to execute contract with L.K. McLean Associates PC for professional services to be provided for historic projects for the Community Preservation Fund.
Can I just rewind for one second? So on, uh, the permeable reactive barrier, just for Rick's edification, you may already know, but it's sort of, uh, it's a trench with wood chips, that's a, when the groundwater passes through before it reaches the water body, there's biological processes that can occur to knock down the nitrogen levels.
Is there additional vegetation or so on that?
What's that about that?
That controls the amount of oxygen that's available to either make it anaerobic or aerobic process in order to convert the nitrates to gaseous nitrogen. That's sort of the process.
I don't know about, like, vegetation above it. Like, in it, though, it's, it's not, no, not really. It's just basically a trench, and it's got, you know, sand and sawdust or wood chips.
Wood chips.
Carbon.
Organic material that, you know?
It's, it's the carbon source for the chemical reaction to make the.
Within an oxygen-free environment, so it, uh?
To a degree.
To a degree. John's the engineer. I was a chemist. Alright, so where are we? Uh, three-three-three-zero-zero? Did we do that one?
Three-three-three-zero-six?
Yes, we did do that. Three-three-three-zero-zero, authorize supervisor to execute an extension with Jackson and Dodds for invasive vegetative removal on town properties.
Alright, uh, three-three-three-one-four, authorizes supervisor to sign a new lease agreement for thirty-eight Little Plains Road. That's right across the street where we have the, uh, the parking and the storage. How many go?
Three-three-three-zero-four, authorize supervisor to sign any and all documents with retro software from, uh, C Systems Incorporated for Parks and Recreation Programs registrations.
Okay, three-three-two-nine-nine? Uh, three-three, uh, three-three-two-nine-nine declares items as surplus items?
Uh, three-three-three-two-six-two, this is twenty-twenty notice to bidders for repair and install, or installation of sidewalks, or, and install sidewalks. Um, three-three-two-nine-two, twenty-twenty notice to bidders for farming at Sarah Field, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine-hundred-sixty-nine-two-thirteen-point-five.
What is that? Now, Sayre Field, isn't that where we have, like, a fairground? Or is that something we lease out for farming? Does anybody know?
Sayre Park is where we have the.
Oh, Sayre Park is the fairground, and the field is just an own property that we lease out to farmers?
I believe there is a difference.
Do we, uh?
We, we don't farm at Sayre Park.
Do we put any restrictions on the farmland that we lease in terms of that it has to be under a, an IPM or, or maybe organically farmed? Do we know?
No, not generally.
Not generally?
If you ask for it, it can be.
We can do that? 'Cause I, you know? I, I think if it's a.
Yeah, Lisa's out sick today. I think she was gonna weigh in on this to answer that question.
If it's for, if, to me, if it's near a body of water, you know, surface waters, then we ought to at least be considering putting some limitations and, you know, trying to promote organic farming. But, uh, this is going to be RFP'd, so.
We can put that in.
Be that.
We could, but I'm not, you know, let's take a look at where it is. I'm not sure necessarily every piece of farmland could be subject to that limitation, but certainly some, some should be. You know, if there's a, a lot of houses near it, you know, the spraying of pesticides, you know, can impact residential properties, or if there's a school near it. Alright, let's move on to the next one. Three-three-three-two-one, two thousand nineteen request for proposals for Riverside Community-Wide Brownfields Assessment Program Hazard Substances and Petroleum Waste.
Would like to be added as co-sponsor, please?
Okay, you got that?
Yes.
Three-three-two-five-seven, bond authorization of three hundred thousand for town police computer system upgrades. That's gonna need four votes. We have a roll call. Uh, three-three-two-six-six, again, uh, four-vote roll call.
Again, would like to be added as.
This is bond authorization for two hundred thousand for various park improvements. These are all in the capital budget. Uh, three-three-two-six-eight, bond authorization of five-two-five-zero-zero-zero, five hundred twenty-five thousand for various improvements to various town buildings.
Yes, please.
Uh, three-three-two-seven-one, another bond resolution, uh, two hundred ten thousand for townwide fueling station upgrades. Uh, three-three-two-seven-two, uh, bond authorization, a hundred thousand for townwide bridge reconstruction. It's not a lot of money for bridges, um.
Barely gonna paint two of them.
Yeah. They might be minor, like culvert type structures.
As provided in the twenty-twenty adopted budget.
Uh, three-three-two-seven-three is a bond resolution for half a million for highway equipment. Three-three-two-seven-four, bond authorization of eighty thousand for bulkheads. Uh, three-three-two-seven-five is a bond authorization, two hundred thousand for townwide culverts. Uh, three-three-two-seven-eight, uh, bond for two hundred fifty thousand for townwide drainage. Three-three-two-seven-nine is bond authorization, two million one hundred and fifty thousand for road improvements. Three-three-two-eight-oh is a hundred thousand dollar bond for sidewalks. Three-three-two-eight-two, two hundred fifty thousand dollar bond for waste management equipment.
Would like to be added to that, please?
Cindy, you got that? Uh, three-three-two-eight-three is a hundred thousand dollar bond for beach improvements.
Same addition, thank you.
So these are all from the capital budget. We do these in the beginning of the year so that, uh, land can then go ahead and prepare the, the bid. They all get grouped together, and we do one bond offering. So, uh, three-three-two-eight-five is a bond authorization, half a million dollars for Riverside Maritime Park. Uh, three-three-two-five-nine, bond authorization of a hundred twenty-five thousand for various equipment at Police Department. Uh, three-three-two-six-one, the bond authorization of two hundred and five thousand for hazmat truck.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to that.
So I'm looking to prepare that. Three-three-two-six-three is a bond authorization of three twenty-five, three hundred twenty-five thousand for various IT projects. Three-three-two-six-five, bond authorization of a hundred ten for parks equipment.
Would like to be added, please?
Cindy. And I'll try to get, um, the controller here and maybe Christine Fenton for this meeting. Janice, could we request that they're present if we have any questions about these bonds? So if there's any questions about these bonds. Alright, uh, three-three-two-seven-oh, bond authorization of a hundred ninety thousand for creation of bike lanes and construction of a multi-use path through Good Ground Park.
Would like to be added, please?
You know, it's a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar project, but I guess that's our portion.
Yeah, I think it's actually more than that.
It is?
Closer to a million.
Really? So that would be close to twenty percent of the budget?
It's a hundred ninety thousand as provided for the twenty-twenty adopted budget.
Well, sometimes we have to lay out money.
Yeah.
Depending on the program, sometimes we have to lay out the money and then get reimbursed.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a match.
But this doesn't sound like it. It says, uh, pay a portion of a nine hundred forty-five thousand dollar estimated maximum cost. So this is our portion. Sounds like about, you know, twenty percent of the number. Alright, uh, three-three-two-eight-four is bond authorization, a hundred twenty-five thousand for comprehensive plan action items. We might need Janice to discuss this. This is for, it's for planning studies. Um, three-three-two-eight-six, bond authorization of three point five million for the Southampton Ambulance Building.
I'd like to be added, please?
We've been discussing that. Excuse me. Three-three-two-four-oh, amends the twenty through twenty-four capital budget for townwide heavy equipment. Three-three-two-four-one, amends the twenty through twenty-four capital budget to remove capital project Emerald Rose Elliston Park. Uh, three-three-two-four-two, amends the twenty twenty-four capital budget for park improvements.
Would like to be added to that, please?
Alright, that's over by SYS, the North CBR, so we're gonna be building some new facilities there. Uh, three-three-two-four-three, amends the twenty-twenty Hampton Days Water District fee schedule. So this is what, let me explain this, because we passed a budget that they call for, um, the fire department paying a fee for the fire hydrants, which is typical in a water district. It's, it's ultimately, I guess, a wash, because the fire department would then have to tax for the money, and then it goes to the Hampton Days Water District, which then wouldn't have to tax for the money. It's the exact same taxpayers. The problem with it is that, um, the budget's already, we've put it in our budget, but the fire department didn't put it in theirs. So they don't have the money to pay for the hydrants, 'cause they didn't collect it in the taxes. So, um, what, what we'll have to do then is, if we're going to do this, do it next year. And let the fire department know so that they can, uh, when they put out the tax bills, it will have the adequate money collected to then transfer over to the water district. Uh, it is typical that a water district will charge the fire district. They're not always the exact same, uh, property boundaries, property tax boundaries. So, but they are here. It's the same taxpayers. So it's, it's not gonna make a difference per se, but we won't have that revenue in the water district, unfortunately. And, you know, as we go through all the, a year where we're doing quite a bit of capital improvements. Alright, three-three-two-nine-six, amends the twenty-two to twenty-four capital budget for CPF East Quag Water Main Extension. Uh, three-three-two-nine-seven, amends the nineteen, two thousand nineteen adopted budget for various departments. So that's for housekeeping there. Three-three-one-two-six, uh, designates the Topping Reiner House, one twenty-one South Road, Hampton, as a historic landmark. That's the subject of a public hearing that'll occur earlier that day. Three-three-one.
I'm sorry, I'd like to be added to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that? Is that that boathouse? Or no? Is that's a different one?
No, that's, no.
No, that was part of that Reiner property that we're acquiring? That's not the same?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm sure it'll be explained to us at the public hearing. Three-three-one-seven-four, authorizes Community Preservation Fund tax refund pursuant to the first-time home buyers exemption for William C. Margaritas and Al, Ally Glenn McGrath. So that's something that, uh, we're allowed to do for first-time home buyers to, uh, to exempt them or give them a refund on their CPF tax.
Just, just for a note on the previous one, I think you were referring to Tupperblow House.
No, no, I was thinking recently we acquired a property in.
It's right down the street.
The owner of the.
Down, if it's not that.
It's not the same one. Yeah, remember the owner?
It's just a block away from.
Don't tear down the boathouse. It's historic.
Right.
It's literally a block down the street.
Okay. Literally hanging in there.
Alright, so, um, three-three-three-two-two sets twenty, uh, two thousand twenty meeting date for the commissioners of the Hampton, Hampton Days Water District, Thursday, May fourteenth, and Thursday, October eighth. We're also gonna do that special meeting, Janice, in February, first week of February. February fifth, so that'll be also kind of a special meeting of the, of the water commissioners, where we'll present the capital plan, ten-year capital plan in Hampton Days to the community. And if we feel there's a need for additional meetings as, uh, water commissioners, 'cause that is a hat that we all wear in the Hampton Days area, we'll, we'll do, we'll do it as necessary. Hopefully, the two meetings will be sufficient. Alright, three-three, oh, sorry, Tommy John, you're right.
Three-three-three-two-seven, uh, this is a modification of the service award program for volunteer ambulance districts. The Losap points are corresponding between our four ambulance districts.
It, um, so this is based on changes at the state level, or?
It is, um. So the town has, has a policy toward, uh, those districts. So that those districts absolutely, and it's, it goes along with, uh, New York State Municipal Law.
Right, yeah, 'cause we, we can't award points that the state doesn't allow, so we have a program that parallels the state's program.
There's no financial impact.
Right.
So I, I guess there, there might be some, uh, some variations in terms of how many points we can decide to award for different things?
As commissioners of the ambulance districts, we're, uh, codifying this in, in our code to, uh, make it uniform throughout our ambulance districts, as opposed to the districts themselves creating their own policy.
Right, and we have, I know we've issued some guidance through the Controller's Office to these ambulance companies. To make sure that, you know, certain things aren't being given credit, that the state doesn't allow for credit. It's, it's basically a pension program, and you have to get, I think, fifty points in a given year to be able to qualify for, I think it's twenty dollars a month per year of service.
That's correct. After you put in twenty years or, um.
Ten years, right? It's ten or twenty? Ten years.
Uh, you can vest within ten years, um, but for full payout, it's, it's twenty, as I understand it.
And I think there's a max on it, too. There's an upper end, but it gets a, you know, it's a decent way of rewarding our volunteers.
They put in a lot of time, a lot of training.
No.
And of course, they're there when you need them.
Save a lot of dollars.
Yes.
And the money that's used to pay that is collected within that tax district. But we do wanna make sure that, um, everybody's following the state rules. Alright, uh, three-three-one-three-one, authorizes Lisa Conver to attend the Association of Towns Annual Conference. Three-three-two-six-oh, accepts retirement of Michelle Orestis, uh, Senior Office Assistant in Town Clerk's Office. But it's one of yours, Cindy?
Yes, she's been with us for, I wanna say thirteen years, maybe, or so. We're gonna miss her.
Yeah.
But, uh, it's.
Did I say her last name correctly?
You did, yes.
Uh, three-three-zero-one-seven, accepts retirement of Robert Welsh. Deputy Highway Superintendent in Highway. Well, he's been with the town a long.
He's been a long time.
I'm sure Alice has gotta miss him a lot.
We're all gonna miss him.
Deputy Bob.
Deputy Bob.
Deputy Bob.
Right?
Nice woman.
He is.
Yeah, he is a nice guy. I've always enjoyed, uh, dealing with him. Three-three-two-oh-five, amends the contract with Chief Stevens-Grennacki. Uh, three-three-two-nine-eight, increases annual salary for Paula Gottfried, Legislative Aid. Three-three-one-nine-nine, appoints Allison Palmore to Senior Count Clerk Typist.
Three-three-zero-seven-two, appoint Megan Zagorelli to Legislative Aid position in Town Council Office.
I'd like to be added to that, please.
Uh, three-three-two-eight-eight, authorizes town personnel to attend the twenty-twenty Association of Towns Annual Conference, including myself.
ID three-three.
Wait, hold on, before you, before you move on, so, uh, you know, I, I really recommend going to this.
Great.
The, uh, they're very good. The Association of Towns, um, Rick, if you have the opportunity to go, it's not too late to sign Rick up, is it? I don't think so.
Yeah, we went through the paperwork, I think, yesterday on that.
Alright, so, and then, yeah, I mean, you should go. You should go. You, you'll learn a, a lot. I go, even though I've been doing this for, like, twenty-seven years now, I still learn things. So I highly, I highly recommend going. Um, I don't know if you, either one of you are able to go.
I'd like to go. I haven't, um, I haven't looked at the schedule, just if we all go, we, I don't know what the dates are.
We might not all be in the same room together, so.
Well, we, you know, we.
Take different classes.
We need to designate.
So Association of Towns is.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a statewide organization that educates municipal. It's a statewide organization that educates municipal officials.
It's a good organization.
And there's always a lot of things going on at the state level, there are, there are changes, there's classes in pretty much everything from, you know, wireless communications to, you know, financial fiscal management, protocols, uh, you know, accounting procedures, it's everything you can imagine. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I, this, like, a hundred different offerings of these things, so.
And they have some really great speakers too, Senator Schumer always makes a, 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 a speech there and Senator Denapoli, Senator, Controller Denapoli.
Controller Denapoli, better get that straight.
Yeah.
Tom Denapoli.
So.
And he's great, he's very.
Yeah, he's very good, Tom Denapoli does an excellent job.
Well, and our retirement funds too.
So, uh, so, so I highly, I highly, highly recommend going, we will, the town will cover the costs of the dues as well as the hotel. So, uh, but we need to know soon, and so we can, we can probably amend this on the floor, um, to add additional members. Oh, it, okay, so it's, it doesn't.
This is just who's Charlie will be.
It's not limited to those four?
Oh, yes, it is.
Good job, Deputy Town Attorney. Resolve the town.
I believe the town attorney's office has their own resolution.
Yeah, I think it's.
Lisa's Conver already did hers, so I'm just agenda.
Okay, where did you see that?
Under name.
Name.
If you go to any.
Oh, any town board member.
Don't we have a new town attorney in?
There's the next one.
That's in the next one, alright, oh, it's coming, I'm ahead, alright.
Alright. Alright, so, uh, three, 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 two, eight, authorizes town personnel for the town attorney's office to attend the twenty twenty Association of Towns annual conference.
Hey, I'm sorry, where are you?
Oh, look, who's going?
I thought we.
Good for you. Alright, Christina's going, Capping's going, Rochelle's. Everybody but, uh, but Kellyanne, huh?
Somebody's gonna.
Somebody's gonna stay, I guess.
I know, keep the lights on.
In case we have a problem.
Oh, and Katie got, no, Katie's going, Cara's not going.
I'll be coming in, go.
Cara's not going.
I'm not gonna go.
Um, three, 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 two, three, oh, is that Julie resolution, you wanna read that?
Sure, authorization for youth bureau staff to attend New York State Association Youth Bureau's Leadership Forum in Albany on September three to the fourth in twenty twenty.
Three, three, oh, eight, two, notice a public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Ryser Trust, Noyak, and amends the C P F management and stewardship plan to include the property. Um, Rick, you feeling left out, you wanna read one?
Three, 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 one, three, three, one, three, seven, notice a public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Picholk, Remsenberg, Spionk, and amend the C P F management and stewardship plan to include property.
Would you like to be added to that, please?
Tell you next.
Town ward resolution I D three, three, two, four, five, notice a public hearing to consider amending various provisions of the Southampton Town Code, including chapter three thirty zoning, two ninety-two subdivision of land and three twenty-five wetlands to require a digital submission of particular applications.
That goes all the way over to page one oh four.
Yep.
Rick, you able to pick up on one oh four?
I'd like to be added as a co-part.
Three, three, zero, four, nine, amend the town of Southampton Community Preservation Project Plan and C P F Management and Stewardship Plan to include the Three D Associates Incorporated and Cap Tree Group, L L C Properties, Remsenberg, Spionk, and authorized acquisition.
Let me rewind, I missed, I missed one, not you, I did, uh. Three, three, oh, six, oh, authorizes acquisition of lands of Daphne Tracus, trustee of Louis Tracus of Local Trust and Tracus Realty in Hampton Bayes, amends C P F Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property, that's one of those public hearings. I had Rick read, three, three, oh, four, nine. Three, three, oh, eight, nine, authorize transfer of lands of Suffolk County Riverside pursuant to General Municipal Law seventy-two H, amends the seventy-two management and stewardship plan to include that property.
Would you like to be added to that, please?
Uh, three, 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 oh, five, accepts the file notice of completion of the final supplemental generic, uh, did you get that, Sunday?
I did, yes.
Accepts the file notice of completion of the fi- final supplemental generic environmental impact statement uh, related to the amendment of chapter three thirty, added article thirty-two, section three, three, zero, dash, four, two, one, three, 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 zero, dash, four, three, nine, as the form-based zoning overlay district entitled Hampton Bayes Downtown Overlay District. Uh, you all have that, right, so you've all had an opportunity to read it, so I'm putting the resolution in to, uh, to, uh, accept it. If you need to make any changes, we can, uh, discuss that.
I, I did have a question on the draft, the D and B report for the ten-year capital.
Okay.
It's a draft version, I'm expecting that we're going to get a final version before our meetings.
Yes.
For the public, so I don't know, do we have a schedule on that, I have some.
Well, we can accept it in the draft form as the final, we could just take the word draft out, but if we make any changes to it.
Is there gonna be one more opportunity for that, because I have some questions, I don't know if you want to do that as a, or I can do it privately.
I, it is something that I do want to have accepted to make it official, so there will be a resolution at some point, um, accepting the plan. What I was most concerned with, because I, I don't wanna tell the professionals what they think we need, I want them to tell us what we, you know, what we need. Um, but if there are factual mistakes, um, I certainly would like to correct them, so I know that Bill Murklin from D and B is meeting with, uh, uh, Mr. McEwen and Mr. Cappers and going over the plan. Um, I've only noticed one, one error, it's not really an error, it's, it states on due road that there are two restaurants, there are actually three restaurants, just one is not operating. Um, but other than that, I, I, I haven't been able to find, uh, anything that is inaccurate, um.
Mr. Murklin did say that he will provide the final draft before the public meeting or the fifth to the board.
Yeah, I'm just trying to determine if there's a time of input to that, because I have, um, I, I was gonna either have correspondence with him about that, but I didn't wanna surprise the board.
The supervisor mentioned he's meeting with the, uh, Hampton Bayes Water District Management tomorrow, he's meeting tomorrow, and he wants to incorporate those comments.
After that, I'd like the word draft to come off of it, and, you know, so maybe if you can get any other comments to him that you wanna make.
Or be part of that meeting.
Because I'd, I'd like to put it out to the public, I'm not sure the public has really had a chance to digest it. Maybe put it on our website, if it's possible.
Well, absolutely, sure.
So that they can read it, it's, I think, I think it's an excellent report, uh, it's really thorough, it examines all of the, uh, infrastructure there as well as the operations of the plan, um.
Well, I would expect that there would be some amendments to it, based on the meeting they're gonna have, so maybe I should join that meeting and just like, offer it then.
If you could, if you, if you can have John go.
If you just let me know.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I was going to.
Okay, great, yeah.
But you can, you know, so we'll do it that way.
Well, she's just telling you.
Right, yeah, or, you know, or just.
Jenice, is there any other add-ons, it's, alright, so, any questions about the agenda? Is everybody good? Alright, Sunday, you're free to publish.
Excellent.
Alright, and we have a patient crowd here scheduled for ten fifteen, which I suspect we're quite a bit past, a half an hour past. So thank you, so we're gonna move on to a presentation by the Sustainability Committee on, uh, the noisy subject of gas leaf blowers, um, and the not the noisy subject of helium balloons. Yeah, not publicly, yeah, yeah.
This is gonna be an elevating discussion, I'm sorry.
A lot of hot air, no, it's not actually hot air, it's lighter than.
Lighter than, yeah.
Alright, so, uh, Dieter von Liston, pretty good?
Yeah, yeah.
I, it's my fifth year trying to get his name correct, um, is, uh, going to lead this off, but, uh, Tip, uh, Brolin is here and Gloria, Gloria Burke is here and other members, uh, of the committee. Julie Burmeister and Joe Glorioso and anyone else?
Gloria Burke.
I got Gloria Burke, you aren't listening.
Strong representation.
All people whose names I can't say correctly, mostly. Alright, alright. Dieter, go ahead and lighten us on, uh, gas leaf powered, gas powered leaf blowers.
Gas powered leaf blowers, uh, good morning, um, thank you for seeing us for the Sustainability Committee, my name is Dieter von Liston, and I'm going to present today the gas powered leaf blowers and what, what to do with those things in the future. As you're all aware, um, gas powered leaf blowers, um, are a big nuisance, while they do their job, they make a lot of problems. I gave you the presentations which normally would have put up on a screen, but as the screen's behind you, uh, we have to do by paper. It's on, it's two-sided, so you can just flip on the other side. Um, the Southampton Village has led the way in this case, and we are following in this one, so it is not a hard, uh, subject to get through. The gas powered leaf blower shall not be used from May twenty to September twenty. The following restrictions apply when leaf blower operations permitted, eight A M. to six P M. weekdays at nine A M. to five P M. Saturdays only. No use on Sundays or federal and state holidays, including by private clubs and municipal employees. No walk behind leaf blowers unless property is greater than one-half acre. No more than two leaf blowers in use at the time, un- unless property is greater than one-half acre. Exception for state emergency declared by the town supervisor. Now, that restriction was accepted by the industry and is in for, has been enforced last year in the village. So there should be no reason why they can't accept it in the town. Now, important is why in detail on page four. According to the American Lung Association, one leaf blower causes as much smoke as seventeen cars, emission include, and then there's a whole list of all those terrible things which are commediate of these units. All the harm, all are harmful to human health and some are known to be carcinogens. Now, there's one accidental thing which before, uh, after we printed this for you, it's an interesting thing. Um, banning their summer use removes emission equivalent to twenty F one hundred fifty pickup driving ten thousand miles per year. So you see, these units are really bad. All leaf blowers equivalent to a pickup truck driving four million miles here in Southampton. The noise level exceeds levels known to cause hearing damage by factor of one to one thousand, even fifty feet away. Effective operators and the public. Manual factors recommend protection, eye protection and breathing protection for operators. And if you go around, you see that virtually none of these people who operate them use any of those protective gears. Elevated noise levels can lead to stress, anxiety, depression, high blood pressure and heart disease. If you turn to the next page, and that is an interesting page, which should be helpful for your decision-making in the end, that is the interviews we had with landscapers and what they had to say to this. Um, some of them, and I don't wanna read to, to every detail of these, but some of them already use electric equipment. Most of them have no really objections to in the long run change to electric, their big objection is at the moment, when are we going to put in a ban? Um, as the units, the electric units are not as powerful as the gas blower units, but that is changing rapidly. And the other excuse in my book is that they always say is, well, the batteries don't last long enough, well, get a second set of batteries, right, so that's not a problem. Um, so, overall, and I attended all the meetings at the village, uh, the landscapers, uh, while a little bit of moaning and groaning, that's what's to be expected, have no real objection to this, and it's, it's been working well during last year. If you turn to the next page, there's other relevant information. And the research which has been done, uh, in this area shows that complete bans are already in effect. And you can see which, uh, states and in which areas they are in effect. And in our neighborhood, uh, in Massachusetts, Connecticut, there is a, a total restriction of these things so far. So, um, another big problem is every time a leaf blower is filled, approximately four ounces of gasoline is spilled. According to the A P A, more gasoline is spilled in one here filling small lawn and gardening equipment than was spilled by the Exxon Valdez incident. So the pollution, uh, which, which happens to these, uh, engines is amazing and just awful. Now, in order to get this thing across, uh, and educate the public, we put in on the next page a planned educational program. Mailing to town citizens and landscapers explaining the law, periodic press releases as effective date approaches, C T V announcements and all in six months before law takes effect. Now, we are recommending that a ban should be taken place. We are still researching what be, would be a good date, but we're aiming for twenty-three, twenty-four latest.
Twenty.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Should be a total ban on.
Total ban on gas.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah.
So you're saying three years, three or four years from now, a total ban, but you're, you're right now trying to get us to enact the same law as the village?
The, the, the village has, yes, but the village has no ban at the moment.
They have a ban in July and August.
Yes, it is.
During the summer season. During the summer season and then it starts, that is.
But they have restrictions on Sundays, the thing, what you laid out.
Exactly, that, that's, that's, that's the law in the village and it hasn't, didn't cause any problems for the landscapers, they agree to that. So it should, should work for the town as well. Uh, but the total ban on the gas powers, we are doing some more research and we are coming up with additional numbers for you guys. Uh, the advisory committee recommends prohibiting the use of gas powered leaf blowers during the summer season, as laid out before. Restriction on hours of use during the rest of the year. Interviews with local landscapers show support. If law passed, education campaign is proposed before laws go into effect. Next step is consideration of complete provision on gas powered leaf blowers in Southampton.
And you're trying to get this in place for this coming summer, is that?
Yes.
Okay, because you said six months of education.
Well, it's not, it's not quite that anymore.
Okay, so.
The, the, the reason, uh, Jay, this, this, this is here for the six months, we tried to do it, um, before the election, but everyone said that the election passed first.
Alright, so now you're recommending four months of education?
No, 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 we're doing it a little faster.
At a six-month pace.
Alright.
Now, on the appendix, um, we, we show, uh, draft law. And this, and the draft law, um, has been taken off by, by others who have the laws in place already and is, is, is a good summary what, what could be done to do this. Um, it is all about the two-cycle gasoline-powered, uh, leaf blowers. Um, the two-cycle gasoline-powered leaf blowers are harmful to the environment and to public and the operator's health. Two-cycle gasoline-powered leaf blowers burn only sixty to seven percent of the gas and oil mixed used as fuel for leaf blowers due to the inefficient combustion process inherited two-stroke engines, resulting in emission of carbon monoxide, et cetera, et cetera, as laid out before. Smoke short the lifespan of people exposed to it on a regular basis and two-cycle gasoline-powered leaf blowers emit smoke created harbor carbons at a rate far greater than many gasoline-powered automobiles. Two-cycle gasoline-powered leaf blowers often have an operating volume that exceeds decibel levels known to cause damage to the ear and haven't been identified in common contributors to permanent hearing loss. Elevated noise levels can lead to street anxiety, depression. Elevated noise levels can lead to street anxiety, depression, high blood pressure and heart disease. According to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control, leaf blowers typically produce ninety decibels of noise and exposure to two hours of such noise can cause permanent hearing loss. The town of Southampton declares that it is therefore in the interest of the public and the landscape equipment operators to restrict the use of two cycle gasoline leaf blowers in the town. Now, I don't think I have to read the law in detail, for that is something which will have to be reviewed by, by the legal department anyway, but it is totally based on what has been passed in the village of Southampton.
Can I ask you about F, no more than a total of two handheld or backpack leaf blowers maybe used at a time unless the property that is being cleaned is greater than a half acre? Why would, so you're saying even with the electrics, you couldn't have more than two?
Electric, yeah, we're talking gas leaf blowers.
It says, it says, it doesn't say that, it says.
Yeah, but, but all, the, the whole law, everything is about gas leaf blowers.
Oh, yeah, I see, okay. The use of, it applies only to the use of gas powered leaf blowers. All right, so if you have the electric, you can have then more than two going. Because that's one of my concerns is if they're not as strong, you might have to have more people in the same amount of time, you know, but you're, you're saying with, that's just the gas.
Yeah, just, just the gas.
Got it.
Is that for noise or?
Yes.
It's primarily for noise.
And the extra pollution. For every time you use it, the particles are spraying up all over the place.
I understand, but using two theoretically could get the job done in half the time. I get right. If that makes sense, I'm not disagreeing with it.
It's noise.
Right, so two is a lot.
Doubles the noise.
For a shorter period of time.
And actually, the overlap of two is really creates a high incidence of air, air emissions on, on a lot of the.
All the stuff which is blown up, other than the leaves. The leaves are the most harmless.
Is anybody, we, we haven't drafted the law yet, right?
No.
Somebody want to take it on? It's like a Julie thing.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we'd like to move forward. Just one thing I did want to add is that this also goes into our 2040 goals of carbon neutrality. The, the amount of carbon emissions and other emissions that come out of these two stroke engines is really horrendous as, as Dieter pointed out, it's, you know, it, it's like driving a pickup truck back of, what is it, 10,000, it's a million miles roughly altogether that, that you would cut out of that, which would help us with our goal. Although it represents a, a smaller percentage of some of the larger things that produce carbon in the town of Southampton, it's a big deal to, to try to reduce this. I've been heartened to watch the, this advisory committee go forward over the last year or so on this subject, interviewing, talking with landscapers, dealing with, there's almost 2,000 vendors in the town of Southampton, there seems to be a pretty positive response. In fact, a lot are already using electric equipment, just as a matter of fact, and I think a lot of work that Christine had done has sort of led that, led them to that realization that this was going to happen. Battery technologies and noise technologies are being baited in electric equipment, so it seems logical.
Christine has done with the quiet community. That goes all, all in hand in hand, so.
Dieter, in your conversation with landscapers.
Yeah.
Are there any designs for those landscaping trailers to have solar panels on them? Do they sell those?
The town has, has one.
The town has one?
Yeah. And that's interesting that you say that.
So you can charge the equipment.
Battery storage, so that's, we can do this.
We, we, we've got some interesting feedback that some landscapers who have regular clients deposit extra batteries at, at the clients. So that means they, they, they then when they go, they have already a second set ready, recharged. So it's interesting. So some, some are activated.
Yeah, because it was that they were using two stroke generators to, you know, to charge batteries, which didn't, you know, didn't work out that well. But some of the landscapers have set up their trucks to, you know, to accommodate that with extra batteries and recharge batteries and, you know, we're looking at initiatives to have, you know, solar charging stations for hybrid vehicles and things like that, which just, it's, it's a, it's, it just seems that this is the right time to begin with get this, and I, I applaud the incremental approach that you're taking. I think it's the right way to go.
Well, I think it's a good thing. I think, you know, of the various complaints we receive, you know, besides traffic and airport noise, this is up there, probably in the top three in terms of quality of life type of noise complaints.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I've been hearing this for years about leaf blowers. I thought the village was bold when they did it. I didn't know how that was going to work out. I know that there's been times in the past where the town, this town or other towns have considered it and all the landscapers come out and the towns usually back off because they don't want to, you know, hurt the local economy and put people out of business. But I think the technology now has really, has really changed. There's good equipment out there, it's effective, it might not be as powerful, but it's pretty close. And the landscapers, I think, are, have gotten used to it. The village took that bold step of doing it first and, and it doesn't, hasn't put anybody out of business, so I, I think that the.
Quality of life in the village has gone up tremendously.
The stage is, is set for the town to follow suit. So who wants to put the legislation for it?
I plan on doing that.
All right, so, you know, I may come responsible, we'll see.
Well, I'd love the whole board to, to join in on that. I think we're all like mine, so I think it sends a better message.
At least let's hear from the community. Let's make sure everybody knows about it.
Yep.
Right. One quick question. Besides the village, is there any other municipality on Long Island that does that now? Or is the village is the only one?
You, you, you can pretty much be sure that Southampton is always in the lead.
East Hampton hasn't done anything yet?
I think East Hampton Village has, but I'm not 100% sure.
Well, there's nineteen municipalities in the state of New York that have done this.
Could you find out for the public hearing if anyone besides Southampton Village has done this? Maybe we could try to get somebody from the village, I'm thinking Kim Allen.
Well, Kim sits on our sustainability committee and actually, actually a lot of the information, I think that was derived came from.
See, that's, that's why I attended, I attended all, all the hearings in the village on this subject.
Right.
So that's why, why I've met all these people and the talks were there and the complaints, I know all of those. But in, in the end, they all realized that they don't really need the blowers in the summertime.
Well, we use them too. The town uses the blowers.
Yeah, but electric.
And we use electric.
Only or we use?
Yep.
Only electric.
And East, East Hampton Village has now electric.
What about highway? I mean, highway must use the gas powered ones, blow sand off if these.
They have the authority too if they have a very tough job that they have to do.
But I, I think it's a, a good lead by example that our, our parks departments are, are using all electric systems and I, I think that's just a good way to lead legislation like this.
So it's, it's one of those things that it is, it's already on the run and, and we are jumping on and can, can send a strong message to an even broader audience. That's really what it is.
All right, thank you, Dieter. Is there anyone else from the Sustainability Committee who wanted to weigh in on this?
You know, I understand that.
Not on the helium balloons, but on the gas leaf blowers.
The answer on the pickups is 200 Ford F-150 Raptor pickups, 400 horsepower. It's a lot of pollution.
All right, thanks, Tip.
Thank you, Tip. Anyone else? All right, so should we move on to helium balloons? You wanted to float this, like, did you?
Yeah, I was floating this, I knew it.
To a lighter subject.
Lighter than air.
Less noisy. What the committee is proposing is to prohibit the sale, distribution and release of any type of balloon filled with lighter than air gas, which practically speaking means helium filled latex and mylar balloons. There's a list here of the municipalities that I was able to find who have done this, mainly Provincetown, Massachusetts, Nantucket, Massachusetts, New Shore, Rhode Island. And there is a bill in the General Assembly for the state of Massachusetts to do this. So far, it's just in committee. And there was a, a press release by the mayor of Provincetown that's had this since the nineties and he said it's working great. They have less litter on their beaches, et cetera.
And I, I think our, our county is also considering legislation of this nature right now, at least, I don't think it's been proposed as a bill, but I think they formed a committee to discuss it.
I don't know. Now, as to why, we've quoted here the introductory statements made, actually prepared by the town attorney's office when the plastic bag ban went into effect, which is a general statement about the environment and litter. But on the next page, we tried to quantify this for Southampton. And I think this is a conservative number because the fundamental number is based on how many of the mylar balloons are released in California or are, I should say, sold in California. So ratioing that to our population, probably more than 85,000 helium filled balloons are used once and then discarded in the town. And speaking for myself, I have inadvertently released more than one. Soon as you walk out the store, one of them goes away. Also, they are not, in contrast to the industry's statements, really biodegradable. If you go online, you can see examples of where the so-called biodegradability has been tested by simply leaving one out in one's backyard and years later, it's still there. So this is not going to go away. And of course, mylar balloons are worse. And we all have seen pictures of dead sea mammals who have ingested these materials because they look like food to them. I just covered the next slide. Now, to go to the helium part, helium is formed in the earth by the radioactive decay of uranium. It has a half-life of four and a half billion years, so helium is formed very slowly, effectively. It's a non-renewable resource. These 85,000 balloons would use 430,000 cubic feet of helium a year. Now, helium is valuable. It's valuable in particular for medical equipment because it boils in extremely low temperature. It's used to cool devices like magnetic resonance imaging, which is its major use. And when I was involved with submarine construction, we would use helium leak tests on particularly sensitive joints because helium leaks through basically anything. Which is one of the reasons your helium filled balloons don't take full of that long. So it's used for welding, cooling devices, et cetera. So we went around and talked to the companies in town, businesses in town who sell helium filled balloons and we got, not too surprising, a mixed reaction. We surveyed eighteen, ten responded, four supported the ban, some of whom have already moved away from balloons, six objected because they didn't want to lose the business. I talked to the manager at King Colton, for example, in Bridgehampton. I didn't realize this, but they do sell a fair number of these and so he said, he had no objection, but he did object because they'd lose some business. Now, how much business? We're not prohibiting the sale of balloons, we're prohibiting the sale of helium filled balloons. So how many people would simply buy balloons and blow them up themselves? I don't know, but there will be an impact on the businesses that sell helium filled balloons. And frequently, there were references to corporate, which I've noticed in doing these surveys over the years, there are more and more references to corporate because we have more and more businesses that are part of a national chain. So people won't give you an opinion and it makes the code enforcement, of course, a bit more difficult.
They don't want to go against the policy of their employer.
Right, right. Now, we faced that with the plastic bags initiative, but it was halved.
We, we faced, we actually faced that with the straw ban as well, and yet I'm finding now that the large corporations and box stores are now using straws, paper straws where they hadn't before, based on that same argument. So it was a matter of time to deplete existing inventory.
Takes time to get the message across. I think we're helped by the fact that the average person that we talk to anyway is in favor of these things. They want to keep the environment clean and this is part of it. We did survey West Hampton, Hampton Bay, Southampton Village, Watermelon, Bridgehampton, Sag Harbor, that's where these businesses were located. We would plan an educational program, same type Dieter described, communications to the citizens and retailers, periodic press releases as you get closer to the effective date, CTV announcements, all in six months, a real six months before the law gets enacted. So that's what we're proposing. It's not unique, but it probably is unique to Long Island. This would be the first we know about and we feel would be useful contribution.
Let's go to questions, so.
Yeah.
I think my first question is, isn't the county considering something?
I don't know whether the county is committing.
They're, they're forming a group to study, so it's still, you know.
They might.
Our goal is always to try to have synergy with what the county does, but I, I feel the county's probably a year or two away if, if they're going to get there at all, so it's hard to really make that, that, and Dieter.
I can add that the county had a law in place that you're not permitted to release more than 25 balloons a day.
No.
That is receding. So the next step is, is all of that can take a long time.
Okay, and what about, this is banning the sale of lighter than air filled balloons, but I, I know sometimes when you're having a party, you buy the balloons and you buy the tank of helium and you fill up the balloons yourself, so that wouldn't be prohibited?
That would be prohibited because the law would say sale, distribution, I mean, both for public or private use is prohibited. No, I, I.
And the way this is.
The way this is worded, it would not.
It wouldn't.
You'd go out and buy your own helium container, bring it into your house and you wouldn't go to that trouble.
I, I should, I should say, you know, just to make two points from my standpoint is, and you're a diver as well, but anybody, Christine, on the beaches, it represents a large amount of the, of the waste that you find and particularly underwater, you'll find it a lot, a lot. So any, any, even with the ability for somebody to go to a red, buy a helium tank to fill up balloons, any, any ban in front of that is going to diminish the ability for people to do that. So any reduction in my view is, is a good one, is a positive one. The other point was that the impact it does have on, on wildlife is, is huge and it's horrifying to see when you do see it, anyone else? Anyone else with a boat has been out, has, you know, seen turtles, and when you're underwater, you see fish, and a lot of animals that just get impacted by this. It's a big, it's a really horrifying thing to witness, and it makes no sense that, that we're doing this. That's my perspective. That's why I support this, just on that basis alone. But I think there is support for it, clearly.
People use those balloons also for other, you know, for scientific purposes or for photography.
They're excluded.
That's excluded.
Photography purposes, people will, you know, but they're tethered. They're tethered. You're putting up a helium balloon, and you've got a string attached to it.
It says the provisions shall not apply to balloons released by or on behalf of any agency of the state or the U.S. for scientific or meteorological purposes, or hot air balloons that are recovered after a while. So, they would not, would not apply.
Would that include schools, science projects, or science, you know, in the back?
I suppose.
That's a science purpose.
Yeah, if it's a real science project, if it's a celebration that the principal left.
Yeah, no, no, a legitimate science experiment because, you know, as a former scientist teacher, yeah, you're learning about density, and it's, it's important for people to understand.
But I think part of that is also responsible education on how to handle that and how to, you know, take your experiment and what, what you do with the helium afterwards, and, you know, not just total dis.
Usually inhale it.
Yeah, that's what I used to do.
And swallow it.
Already high pitched.
Unhealthy.
The plastics.
The numbers are very small, very small.
The plastics that are outside, they, they, they react with the sun. They decay, and they become smaller particles of plastic, which gets into the food cycle and the ecosystem, which eventually gets into us, and, you know, because we are in fact all connected.
Right.
Right? So, I, I know plastics in general, you know, that's, that's a larger question than what we're considering here, but this would be included with that.
Yeah.
Because Mylar is, yeah.
Right, right.
And you're right, it is consumed, and it is in a large part of our food chain right now.
Yeah. And very often, biodegradable means taking big pieces of plastic, and it's, it's able to go into smaller pieces of plastic that you can't see, but now it becomes, you know, part of the system.
They found microplastics, as you probably know, the North Pole.
So, well, I've had the, I don't think it's a great fortune, but I've had the opportunity to die in the, dive in the, almost died in the Pacific gyre. And that was 40 years ago. And there was great masses, you know, we have these giant, these gyres out in the Pacific that turn slowly, about 600 miles across, with huge amounts of plastics. There used to be a policy, ships crossing the Pacific would basically dump garbage that way, out of sight, out of mind. And this gyre is, you know, it's about 10 meters deep. It's, it's, you know, it's out there, and we don't see it, but we're certainly the contributors to it. So, you know, I applaud anything that's going to put a dent, the start of a dent into that. I think that as, one of the things that, the things that happened to me, you know, talking to owners of shops, was that it was hard to really make the distinction between a helium-filled balloon and an air-filled balloon. And there was some interest, you know, and I think in businesses, I think that's, you know, you can, you can do this with air-filled balloons, you can have your parties, you can do that, but they don't disappear. They're in your own hands to handle and to deal with. Enforceability is a very, very difficult thing for something like this. So, it has to be intrinsic on people to understand their responsibilities when it comes to disposal of plastics. We have a, a waste management stream right now that's huge, and we're going to continue to deal with these problems. Styrofoam, 30% of it, plastics from latex and those kind of components are, are big parts of that as well. They also have this additional problem of gumming up machinery. And so, there's a complaint of that as well. So, there's a litany of things you can complain about, about the use of these products.
Certainly, I appreciate your passion for the environment. I remember my passion as a child for helium balloons.
Yeah. Inhaling them.
Well, no, just like it was like to get a helium balloon. That was really exciting. So, you know, I would like to hear more from the public on this, you know, and how it, it changes things. We can use our website, Connie. Maybe we can put a survey out there on the website, or maybe 27 East wants to do it. But we can put a survey, what, should the town prohibit helium balloons? It is, it is a big step, and a lot of people obviously do purchase these things, and they use them for celebrations, primarily, you know, for birthdays and, you know, happy occasions. And, you know, I do want to do the right thing for the environment, but I do want to understand how it's going to affect people's lives. So, I would like to at least use our website to do some sort of online survey. And John, if this is something you want to move forward as a piece of legislation, I would say put the legislation together with the town attorney's office, and we can have a public hearing on it, and we can get some, an opportunity for input.
The irony is that the county legislature had, in fact, had a ban on helium-filled balloons a number of years ago.
Yeah, but withdrew.
And then withdrew it in a change of administration, and it's languished ever since. So, it actually, the legislation sits there, it's available, so it's something that, you know, we can look at. Happy to work with, with whoever in the town attorney's office to work on, on that to develop. We also had changed the definition of lighter-than-air balloon as well, because the definition that we have in our code is a little, and I've worked with Kathleen to make those changes. So, that makes it more conducive. So, it doesn't, there is a fire hazard issue with, like, using lanterns and flame lanterns and things like that. So, you know, there's, there's a complexity to it, but I don't think it's insurmountable. But ultimately, the enforcement is self-enforcement. I don't envision having enforcement, you know.
Bloom please?
Yeah, bloom please is not the idea, I think, but.
You basically want this to serve as sort of a deterrent, right?
I think people, most people are very responsible to their environment. They recognize the impacts it's having and want to do the right thing. So, if they have a pathway to do it, I think a lot of people take that pathway.
Sure. I mean, if there's flagrant abuses.
And there is. And I think that was the basis of the county rule to, you know, to not allow more than 25 balloon releases a day.
Yeah.
It's 12:01, I can do another 25.
Those skylanterns, I personally like. I've seen them used at weddings, you know, more to celebrate a wedding. They're beautiful as they go up into the sky. I've never seen a fire started from one.
Under the law, as long as they're tethered, it's allowable. And now they're using LEDs, they're not using open flame exactly for that reason. So, there are exceptions. I'm sorry?
There, there are LED lights in them that float away in some little battery and plastic?
Yeah, no, well, they're supposed to be tethered under the law for skylanterns. They're supposed to be tethered, and we did modify the law.
How do they float?
How do they float? I don't know.
They're helium-filled with a little LED.
That may be worse.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, maybe.
That's why I wanted to change the law, the definition.
I think we should do some more research because those skylanterns, I mean, they're used around the world, and they're, they're beautiful, and they're paper, and they're all biodegradable. I've never heard of a fire started from one.
Upstate, quite a few fires.
Called Australia. They know that some of the fire have started with released balloons.
Yeah.
Yeah, I find, like, once they go up, they, they don't come down until the flame is out.
If they get caught by the wrong wind, the downwind, I released one, and the downwind came.
Yeah. Well, if you do it in a wooded area, it may not get an opportunity to get above the trees. But if you release it on the beach, you know, where you're far away from it.
But again, the law requires that they're tethered, not released to the sky.
Yes, I know.
In Germany last week, one of these, one of these balloons flew off, got caught at the zoo, and burned all the primates which were in the whole reef.
Is that what caused that fire?
Yeah, that caused the fire.
From a hill, from a lantern, skylantern?
From a lantern.
Skylantern.
Skylantern.
Hmm. I'd be concerned, though, about the tethering because they have the weight of the string and the wind. It's going to now push the balloon down, it could reach the tree line.
I'm not promoting the law, I'm just saying that's what it is. I kind of agree with you, I think it's fraught with all but. But we just wanted to make the difference and the separation that the impacts of plastics, Mylar, and latex, and the effect on wildlife, and the release of these balloons are not recoverable, they end up in our environment, is a critical issue. And some of the exceptions, as, and they've done a lot more research on this subject than, than, you know, we're covering today, there's a lot of background information on this. But what skylanterns, what are the issues that came up on how you deal with that?
Mylar in particular is a problem.
I understand, but the skylanterns are paper, very thin metal, piece of cardboard with a little wax on it.
The problem in California was starting forest fires. Yeah, the same thing could be applicable certainly to setting loose fire and not knowing where it's going to land.
And Mylar with power lines in particular.
Mylar, it's power lines, it's short-circuiting. Power lines goes to a conductor. And so, they literally sued the California utility.
I want to say P G, I've lived there for so long, P G and E.
Pacific Gas and Electric. And they sued them because the state accused them of causing these major forest fires. Three and a half billion, I think, was what this utility had paid. So, anyway, next step would be.
Well, John, start work on draft legislation for public comment and take it from there.
Yeah.
All right. I'll reserve judgment on the helium balloons, but let me see what the law looks like and what the public.
Just because you like to keep a stock.
No, I'll probably support it, but we'll, we'll, we'll see.
From Long Island, you're dealing.
Yes. A lot of hot air, is that what you're saying?
A lot of hot air.
All right. Any other questions for these guys? Thank you to the Sustainability Committee, to Tip and to Dieter.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right.
Bye, Julie. Thank you.
Let's see.
Thanks.
All right, let's see what we have for, in updates. So, Dune Road, I just got texted from the police chief because I wanted to get a sense, but it seems like everything's okay over there.
I was actually down here earlier this morning.
Yeah, I got a, I got a thumbs up, so, because we did have some high winds yesterday in some way.
I went through there to see.
Six to nine foot seas, so, but apparently it held up okay.
The wind was coming from the east, so it was, didn't seem to have.
From the west, I thought.
I'm sorry, from the west, didn't seem to have such an impact. It wasn't coming from the south.
All right, so, so just a quick, quick on Dune Road, and I'm trying to get all the facts straight here, too. The, the federal government, they have approved the dredging project. I don't know if you've ever seen these ocean dredges, they're enormous. They move tremendous volumes of sand. They're coming, they're going to dredge out the shoal areas and I guess some of the inlet.
I think they're, they were cited already. I don't think somebody had.
They're in West Hampton. They're in West Hampton on a different project.
Right, but I think that one of them had started to head towards the inlet.
Really? So, there was a question to me as to whether the, I guess Congressman Zeldin issued a press release, but I don't know whether they were opening the bids, or whether, you know, Greg, you may know, or whether they were just going out to bid. Do you know which one it is?
Opening.
Opening, so they did go out to bid at the end of December. That's what I had heard, and then I got confused when I got some calls about that press release as to whether they were just going out to bid. So, if they're opening bids, then they may have already even awarded the bid. So, this is happening quickly then, and, you know, we have been sort of in this interim phase, just trying to hold, just keep a, a basic berm there to get through at least full moon high tides or minor storm events. And, you know, the county's been extremely helpful. They've been moving sand in, they keep rebuilding that berm, highway keeps taking the sand that gets pushed onto the road and putting it back. And, you know, as long as we don't have a significant storm event, we'll bridge the time between now and when that dredge arrives, which, and starts pumping, we'll, we'll be okay. I have worked with the police department on another approach if there is a storm, like, what would we do prior to when the dredge arrives? So, we have some ideas of assets that we could use to maybe keep, at least prevent a breach. But other than, you know, other than that, we're just going to keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best that we can get through a storm event, if it happens.
Yeah, we're at a full moon cycle right now, so it should be downhill from here.
Good.
I don't mean it in a bad way, I mean.
All right, so, there's a Drawdown Festival this Saturday, January 11th. I know everybody's scratching their heads going, what the heck is Drawdown? I got a book on my desk. I wish that some of the sustainability people were still here to explain it, but Drawdown is a, a comprehensive look or system of steps to take to reduce global warming. It's not just about reversing the slow of global warming, but actually reversing global warming. So, they gave, they gave me a book that I have to read, but it's a, it's a big event. Dar Riley is very involved with this, members of our Sustainability Committee is involved. And it's happening January 11th at the Southampton Art Center. Showtimes are 11:01 and 3:00 p.m. It's a free event. It's open to children over 12 years old. It's a, a really an excellent chance to teach your children about what's happening and how we can all make better choices to improve our climate. There's also live music starting at 5:30, a band that happens to feature Andrea Scavoni as the lead singer and myself on drums, so it's kind of fun if you want to catch me drumming. 5:30.
That's the Drawdown part.
Yeah. So, that'll, that'll be fun. So, we're volunteering our musical talents, so to speak. So, that'll be good. Saturday, again, Saturday, January 11th. Renovation work is continuing at the Hampton Bay's Community Center. We're going to be moving ordinance enforcement, the whole Public Safety Division into that building. I don't know when that's going to be done, but it's moving apparently really well, it's moving along quickly. As you know, too, we are searching for a new head of that department after Steve Troy departed at the end of last year. We have excellent candidates, as I mentioned in my inaugural address, and our job will be to pick one. So, we're trying to narrow down that focus, but I'm very happy with the, the talent pool that we have for that. So, you know, expect, the public should expect that announcement probably within the next few weeks. All right, beginning Monday, January 13th, the South Fork Commuter Connection becomes more affordable. We're dropping the, the $1 that we were charging for the shuttle bus, so the shuttle bus is now free. So, it's $3.25 each trip. The shuttle buses will still operate, you don't have to pay for it. So, we are trying to get more people using the shuttle bus. We had, I mean, more people using the trains in general. A lot of people were using the trains but not using the shuttle bus, so maybe this will make a difference. But we do want to encourage people to use the trains. There's a little fear that if we don't get ridership up, maybe they won't continue the service. This is sort of the time of year as we run up, maybe not January, but certainly by March and April, traffic really starts to pick up as people start thinking about getting their homes ready for the summer season. So, we do see the traffic typically increase, particularly March, you know, April, May, and then the schools let out, and there's a bit of a, a bit of a drop. But I highly encourage people to ride that train. It's a great ride, it's quick, and will take you to work. So, basically, for $6.50 round trip, please take advantage of it and support that program, and let's keep it going. I know there's been some discussions with the Long Island Railroad about adding more trains in the future, adding some sidings that will allow us to change the schedules a little bit, make it even better for people. Use the East End track, there's only one set of tracks, but once you have the sidings, you'll be able to get more of, more trains going in, in two directions.
I was heartened that the governor of the state of the state was talking about MTA funding, not just for Penn Station renovations, but for also for things, hopefully like that, where we can get the funding to add spurs to, to be able to increase our ability to expand the rail commuter hub, so.
Yeah, no, that's good. The governor also talked about, I think I got a $4 billion bond for clean water projects. We've been talking about Shinnecott Bay and trying to do some water exchange. And we've been talking about Shinakot Bay and trying to do some water exchange to help the western portion of the bay. It's, you know, well outside the means of the town financially, but, uh, you know, that could be a source of money that we can use to, to get that kind of water exchange and really get the w- western Shinakot Bay back to health. You know, we've had a lot of impaired waters there, so, um, there was a lot in the governor's State of the State. I only watched the first half of it, um, because I had other meetings, but.
I have the full transcript if you want, 347 pages. And it, but there was a lot in there.
It's on YouTube. It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube, okay.
You know, I had a conference call yesterday with, uh, an individual who's, was interested in Bel Air. This is like the, the third call I've had recently about, um, private developers wanting to see if they can buy Bel Air from the town. We're, we're supposed to go through a process, uh, an urban renewal plan. They are all sort of saying, we'll develop it according to the urban renewal plan and go through the, they'll go through the permitting process rather than the town. So I, I need to discuss, we need to have a conversation about this. I talked to Jim yesterday, Burke, uh, we could do an RFP at this stage and see if anybody wants to buy it contingent upon development, either according to zoning or according to the urban renewal plan. We could then review the, the bidders, see what they're offering, um, what they're planning on doing. I could tell you all three, nobody has interest in doing a motel. They all have interest in doing a 12-unit, um, townhouse development. One of them wants to do it 55 and older, um, which is interesting, and, uh, they're, they're ready to go. They're ready to make the town.
So I, I read in the paper, Greg, maybe you can confirm this in your paper, that there was a hotelier who was interested in the old diner in Hampton Bays.
Oh, I know about that as well, too.
So that, that's, and he was talking about, I think, a boutique motel, if I recall, something like that.
Yeah, so I think 50 to 60 units there at that site. Um, the town code doesn't allow it. We would have to create some sort of zoning to allow it, so my feeling with that was to, um, let this, uh, hotel person, um, describe their concept, do renderings and present to various community stakeholders, you know, the CAC and Hampton Bays, the Civic. Let's get a sense of whether that's something that the community would like to see there. I, I, I know lots of people would like to see the diner back.
Yeah, I, I gotta agree.
I, I don't know.
I like that diner.
I don't know, but there, you know, I have, uh, vetted this idea with some about a small hotel there. This person was talking about a Hilton brand hotel and, uh, you know, the idea that it could provide foot traffic for downtown, that people who would have money in their pockets to shop at the shops and spend money at, you know, go to restaurants. So it's mostly, mostly been positive. So to me zoning is supposed to allow the community to grow the way the community wants it to grow. And if that's something that the community thinks would be beneficial, then I think we need to work with the community on allowing that to happen and make sure all the environmental concerns are addressed. Obviously it would have to. Obviously it will have to have sewage treatment, right, that's a given, that, uh, you know, that the, the nitrogen component can't be more than what currently would be proceed, uh, would, would occur under zoning. Possibly less if we do nitrogen-removing sanitary system. So, but thank you for bringing that up. So you have the Bel Air, I'm thinking that it may be worth an interim step before we go to the zoning board or we go through the process of changing the zoning here is to see what, if, if a developer were to come in now and go through the process themselves. If you guys want to consider that, I would consider that. We would then do some sort of RFP, but they would have to develop it according to either the current zoning or what was allowed under the, uh, you know, the urban renewal plan.
Yeah, I, I think as you state, you know, I want to hear from the community and see if there's, there's a taste for that.
Well, this is for the Bel Air I'm talking about.
Oh, Bel, I was talking about.
I've gone back to Bel Air. Yeah, the diner. The diner will let this developer do his renderings and present it to the civics and, you know, the various groups, Hampton Bays Beautification. With the Bel Air, we're on a course right now, we own it, we're gonna clean up the site, we're gonna go, we're gonna go and determine which is the best use, the hotel or the townhouse development. Then we're gonna go through the permitting process and then auction it. But we could circumvent that, we could jump ahead and not have the town go to the zoning board, by having a developer go through the zoning board. We, as long as we're made whole, you know, we get, we get paid, we have 1,050,000, 1,060,000 in the acquisition. We have a few thousand in environmental, as long as we're made whole, if somebody wants to develop it according to that and, and go through the process, that was the whole idea, is to take the hotel which had become blighted, unsafe, fire hazard, um, a real, you know, was sort of bringing down the economic development of Hampton Bays and get it to be, you know, a positive thing for the community. That, that was the goal and the private sector wasn't stepping in. Now we've passed an urban renewal plan, signaled to the community, this is what we'd like to see happen, and now the private sector is saying, look, yeah, we would like to do that. I think they're afraid that if we go through the urban renewal plan, they'll have to pay a lot more once we have the permits. Whereas if they take it, if they go, take it now, they take the risk of getting the permits, but potentially at a lower cost, so.
I like the idea, I think it's a good way to see how serious they are about this, and it's important. You know, we would want to change our process, you know, for a buyer who may or may not be, you know.
I'm okay with at least entertaining.
Absolutely listening here.
There's three of them.
And we get to see a, a true look on what they're thinking and, you know, we'll get a better idea of what could actually be used on that property.
Yep. Yeah, I know one person has done a lot of work already, he's laid out a site plan, 12 units, but it's three buildings, each building with four units. It's a little more expensive to build it that way, uh, there's some benefits because you get better light and more people get N rooms, which are a little bit more expensive. But I know the community was concerned about massing, they didn't want to see one big building.
Right.
Right, so if you have three buildings, that might, that might be nice.
Well, it sounds like there's an appetite on the board to at least hear what, what they have to say.
Okay, so we'll, I'll invite them, invite them to a work session, and we'll decide if we want to do a, a formal RFP. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Okay. Or maybe we should just jump to the RFP and let, let them respond and we'll entertain those proposals out of work session. Which way, Kurt? Which is first?
Right.
The plan.
We can't just go to one builder and say, you can, you can buy it, we have to do a competitive process, so. I think the plan, the RFP.
Well, I think you, you, if, if you're gonna go that way, you should at least have a draft RFP get, uh, get ready.
Why don't you have maybe Janice come in and talk about the potential and the both scenarios where the board's fully educated on the potentials, and then you can decide, go out for an RFP at that point and see what developers come back.
Okay.
Because after seeing that, he, you know, he may have a slightly different take on what he might present to us.
Then we're not just talking to one developer who's presenting.
Yep.
Okay, well, let's see, I'll take it from Janice. Okay, um, so, uh, I have a note here about Senator Laval, I, I think announced already yesterday, right? Tell me, John, did he? He's, uh, not going to be seeking another term after, is it 40, four years or 46 years, I can't remember?
Currently it's 43, this is his 44, and he won't be finishing out his term.
So, uh, you know, we have had the honor of working with Senator Laval. I have for 27 years in one capacity or another, uh, certainly 20 years in elected office, um, and, uh, yeah, I got to know his wife Penny, uh, who's works in, um, real property at the county, but, uh, you know, Senator Laval was instrumental in the CPF program. He's, uh, you know, he, he was helpful to us with the, uh, with the rail service. He's gotten the town so many different grants for, you know, paving roads and building bridges and, um, he's been a real leader on the environment and, uh, I, it's quite a run he's had at the state senate. That's, uh, 44 years is, uh, uh, you know, is a lifetime for many, and, uh, you know, he's been really involved with education, uh, education, I think he's chaired these, the state education, higher education committee for a long time, and, um, he was a co-sponsor of the Pine Barrens Act, back, uh, under Mario Cuomo, and, uh, and then it passed, I think, under Governor Pataki. But, uh, you know, uh, I, Senator, Senator Laval's been great for me to work with, so, uh.
I think he has for all of us.
I, I, I wish him the best in his retirement, um, we're gonna have big shoes to fill over there. I, I know, uh, it'll be, uh, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll end up with a great, uh, new senator. I know people have expressed interest in, uh, serving in that capacity, but I do want to thank, uh, Senator Laval for, for 44 great years of service to our community.
I'll let go of that, I, you know, in, in particular is, um, the way he and some of them feel I've worked together particularly to help us has just been, I, I don't think we really appreciate, but what, what a good relationship that is, it has, and that relationship's been a good relationship for the town of Southampton, and, um, I, you know, I hope it continues in some capacity in the future, so. My, my personal, my, my, my personal thanks to Ken for, um, the gentleman that he's always been, and, uh, he's supported everything I've ever talked to him about, so I can't say, can't say enough good things about him. We wish him luck, I do.
He and Fred have made a good team, and his legacy is gonna last for, for generations, the accomplishments that Senator Laval has, has made. You know, they have been a good team. Two things particularly, the, the Tickborne Resource Center at Southampton Hospital, you know, it really is the model in the state for awareness of tickborne illnesses and how to counteract that. Senator Laval and Assemblyman Thiel were key in getting that funding and getting that program off the ground. And then, of course, there's Stony Brook Southampton.
Yeah.
You know, without Senator Laval, um, we might be talking about rezoning that area, or, you know, so that might have gone a different way.
We could have lost that, yeah.
And, uh, it was his leadership and Fred Thiel's leadership that, that really, really, uh, you know, made that happen. I met him first when I was in eighth grade on a school trip. He spoke to us in the gallery of, of the senate, and he also spoke at my high school graduation at Psych Harbor, so he's certainly been in the community and part of the community, the events and things.
Not just the campuses, not just the campus, but the hospital itself. His, he's been tremendous, tremendous supporter of the hospital and done a lot of work on, uh, you know, women's health issues and, you know, he's, he's got a, a long legacy of service to the community. I remember when I was East Hampton supervisor and I was trying to preserve a piece of property about 100 acres on the ocean, you can imagine how hard that was, a property called Shadmore, uh, which was gonna be developed with homes and, you know, this was the early days, uh, maybe even pre, sort of, sort of the beginning of the CPF fund, we had very little money, um, and, you know, the county wanted to help, but I, I still needed $7 million to make it happen. Back then, $7 million, it was, the whole price was about 17.6 million if I remember, and, uh, trying to piece that together, and I needed help from the state. And, uh, you know, Ken really came through, uh, along with, uh, uh, you know, Assemblyman Thiel and Perry Durier at that time, who was former assembly leader. Uh, everybody was making calls and trying to get, uh, the, uh, the state to, to chip in, and today it's a state park, a beautiful state park, popular, um, with, you know, lots of people go there and walk those cliffs and see those clay formations, and it's beautiful if you ever get a chance, but Senator Laval was really helpful, um, lots, lots of things to my career where he stepped up and, uh, and helped with. So, uh, thank you, Senator, so.
It, it's interesting, you know, you were talking about how you met him, and I, I, I always associated Ken, associate Ken with schools, and there's, um, when we judge science fairs or Rebsenbergs, so the small schools in these areas, he, he was always there, you know, and would, and I liked the style, you get things quietly done without a lot of fanfare, and he has done that consistently throughout his career, and, you know, I hope just because he's leaving office that he doesn't continue to help influence, um, other political officials and help to get these things done that, that we all believe in, so. But I, I, I do, I, I just love that, the style, the quiet, unassuming way of getting things done.
Yeah, he's a gentleman.
Yeah.
Well, we wish him luck, we still be around.
Still be around.
And the best in your retirement, Ken, and, uh, same, you know, uh, best wishes to Penny as well. You know, that's, you know, I guess when you're married to, uh, somebody, a state senator or something, you don't get to see them very much because they're a public servant and, you know, they're busy all the time with events and things like that, so they get to enjoy each other.
Yeah.
A little bit, which is a good thing. All right, um, any other updates? South County, we had, uh, we had the New Year's celebration. Here was not as well-attended as we were hoping. So maybe next year we'll have to rethink things a little bit.
Well, we kind of think that the, um, position of New Year's Eve being right in the middle of the week and schools having two weeks vacation play a factor, a lot of people want to like.
Yep.
It could be, you know, Greenport does a first night, which is also the same, the same kind of thing, it's alcohol-free, I believe, but they do a lot of like ice skating and all, it's like all kinds, downtown, it's really sort of festive, and, um, I mean, you know, maybe we should rethink the venue a little bit to make it more fun, I don't know.
Well, we definitely are having, uh, you know, a Monday morning quarterbacking meeting on this, so we will be looking at future events, also maybe one in the summer.
Was there a band, maybe we should get a band going?
We had the Quiet Disco, which was really nice, it was really good. Have you ever tried it with the headphones? It's a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say, that's almost an oxymoron, Quiet Disco, I was, I forgot what you were, what you meant by that.
Yeah, and people love those. Everybody hears the same music, but if you're wearing the headphones.
There are different channels.
Oh, really?
And so you could be dancing to 70s music, or you could be dancing to Top 40, and people, when they have the headphones on, they forget they have them on, and they're singing, and they're all singing off key. So when you're not wearing your headphones and you're listening to all these people dancing with the headphones, it's, it's quite fun.
I didn't realize there's three different channels, so one person's dancing fast and one person's dancing slow.
Yeah.
That would confuse me.
And for example, somebody's dancing to YMCA and they're doing the YMCA, somebody else was dancing to slower music. It's fun.
Okay.
We all go to our own tune, I guess, right?
Or drummer.
Yeah.
Um, I have a couple of things, uh, on Friday night, the Rotary Club of Southampton is going to be sponsoring a bingo night at Southampton High School, that's tomorrow night, and of course, board members are encouraging you, Jake, I know you've gone to these things in the past, and, uh, please come. Uh, all the proceeds are going to go to the Southampton Animal Shelter, that starts at 7 o'clock over at the high school. Bingo, it's fun.
Bingo.
And, uh, we're having a youth and government meeting tonight featuring Mr. Volger. He's gonna be working with the kids, he too runs a youth and government, uh, group, uh, this is at Center Riches, he's really great. He's a veteran, Iraqi war veteran, teacher, awesome guy, and that starts here at 6 o'clock.
Here.
Here, in this room. Lower luck.
Anything else?
Can't get any lower without a shovel.
John, you got anything?
I'm good.
Rick?
Good.
I will, you know, I'm working on committee liaisons assignments, so, uh, um, I hope in the next week to be able to announce that, so you guys know what I've assigned you to, and that will affect which resolutions you read. I'm sorry you didn't have too many, yeah, anything with your name yet, but, uh, by, by the next agenda, you will have some that, uh, you are the, uh, the main sponsor for unless you choose not to. So, uh, but I'm working on it, and I, I try to, it's not, it's not easy, it's one of the roles of supervisor, trying to figure out, you know, who should liaison to, to what. I try to figure out what your interests are, what your talent set is, um, and, you know, sometimes everybody wants the same things, um, some people want more than others, so, Julie's not here, but we're, I'm, I'm trying to figure it out, so I've, I've talked with all of you and I will continue to talk with all of you, and, and then, uh, sometimes I'll, I can do co-liaisons, and the way I look at it is, everybody's invited to everything. If you're not liaisoned to a particular citizens advisory committee, you can go anyway. Uh, just, we just can't have three of us in any one place without notifying it as a town board meeting. So we're, we're very mindful, we're open. in any one place without notifying it as a town board meeting, so we're, we're very mindful, the open meetings law, so we'll, uh, you know, I'll do my best, and, uh, sometimes you might not get everything that you want, maybe the following year you will, kind of thing, so, all right, um. Any, anything else? All right, so we do have executive session, we have personnel matters, uh, to discuss, and, uh, yeah, so all sort of personnel, all of this confidential legal, and there's also acquisitions, so, uh.
And Lisa's out to, today's six, so I'm not sure if.
All right, unless Jim is prepared to do it, so I'm gonna say we will talk about acquisitions in, uh, in executive session, if we don't, we'll talk about it, that's okay, too, and then confidential and personnel, so I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items.
Second.
Second in my council of Olivier, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.